Everybody. Welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education, regular Board of Education meeting. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated January ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier Post, posted in all schools, the administration building, the municipal building, the libraries, Blood-Duble Center, Edgewood Acres, Elmtown, and the Winslow Township post offices. Our mission statement, the mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and confident members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community, and in climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute, contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
He'll be absent tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Redden?
She'll also be absent as well.
Thank you. Ms. Claude?
Present.
Ms. Martin, present. Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Pitts?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
And Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a forum.
Are you standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Martin, would you read our district goals, please?
For Mr. President, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five district goals. Student achievement: Continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students. This shall include: Conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning. Consistently review student assessment data to guide and redirect teaching. Continue to provide supplemental activities, i.e. tutoring and enrichment periods to address student deficiencies. Benchmark assessment for ninth grade for math and language arts. Two, create a safe and positive learning environment for students and staff. Strictly enforce the district's student code of conduct. Focus on upper elementary school students to modify student behavior in the early grades. Reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. Approach discipline with care, respect, and the desire to see the good in all students. Three, increase parent caregiver and community engagement in education. Provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders. Continue with communication consortium. Focus on refining our communication methods and messages to better market our schools. Continue with our public relations with the community.
Moving on to awards and presentations, Dr. Pacey?
Yes, Mr. President, we do have one presentation this evening. Mr. Deion Davis, Director of Human Resources, who will be presenting today on the two thousand and forty-four, twenty-five HIV and the school safety data report for period one. Mr. Davis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pursuant to New Jersey statute eighteen A thirty-seven dash thirteen and New Jersey Administrative Code six A sixteen dash five point three, I'm here to report and seek approval for the Winslow Township School District's school safety data, which includes information on the district's weapons, violence, vandalism, substance abuse, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents for the period of September one, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Board members in your packets, you should have a chart that I'm going to go over. First up is our Early Childhood Education Center. For this period, there were zero incidents. School number one, for HIV, there was one alleged, one confirmed, for a total of two HIV incidents. There were zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance abuse. So, as school number one, there was a total of two incidents. School number two, zero alleged HIV incidents, one confirmed, for a total of one HIV incident. There were zero weapons, violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. So, school number two had one incident for this time period. School number three, zero alleged, one confirmed, for a total of one HIV incident. Zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance abuse. So, school number three had one incident for this period. School number four, zero incidents for this time period. School number five, three alleged HIV, zero confirmed, for a total of three HIV incidents. Zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance abuse. So, school number five had three incidents for that time period. School number six, four alleged HIV incidents, five confirmed, for a total of nine HIV incidents. Zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance abuse. So, school number six had a total of nine incidents. Our middle school, ten alleged HIV, four confirmed, for a total of fourteen HIV incidents. They had two instances with weapons, which were knives or little blades. They had eleven violence characterized as six fights, four assaults, and one sexual contact. Zero vandalism and zero substance abuse, for a total of twenty-seven incidents at the middle school for that time period. And last, but not least, our high school. Twelve alleged HIV, three confirmed, for a total of fifteen HIV incidents. They had one weapon, which was characterized as a knife. In terms of violence, there were fourteen incidents. Seven of them were fights, seven were assaults, vandalism, zero incidents. And then there were three substance abuse involving marijuana, for a total of thirty-three incidents at the high school. So, our total numbers for the time period HIV, there were a total of forty-five incidents. Three weapons, twenty-five violence, zero vandalism, three substance abuse, for a total of seventy-six incidents for the period of September one, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
On the high school, where it's weapons, it says one knife now, and you said it was characterized as a knife. Was it, was it a knife? Was it a pocket knife, pin knife? Because I noticed that in the middle school, where it was two, if you go as two knife, and one of them had a blade, but the one in the high school?
High school wasn't a knife.
Wasn't a knife?
It was a knife.
I mean, do we know what kind of did they have?
Well, we know what kind it was. The blade just long enough to be classified as legitimately as a knife.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question. In regards to the, um, this data report for September one to twenty-four to December thirty-first, what is the, the difference between last year's numbers to this year's numbers?
So, looking at September one of twenty-three through December twenty-third of twenty-three, our total numbers were eighty-nine. So, there definitely is a drop from last year to this year for that time period. But last year, the same time period, there were eighty-nine incidents. This year, seventy-six.
And what school seems to be carrying the most numbers? Is it still the middle school and high school?
On average, they tend to be the highest. So, if I had a look at last year, the other numbers were about in the same range, but they were highest as opposed to the elementary buildings, yes. Any other questions? Mr. McManus?
Yes, for the, uh, the HIV, um, and forgive me, the, the fights and the assaults and HIV, they're independent. They're not, they don't, one doesn't necessarily overlap into the other.
That's correct, they're separate.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, I do need a motion to approve a-
Motion of the committee.
Can I have a motion to approve Mr. Davis's report?
Motion to approve, McManus?
Peterson second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved.
Ms. Foyle, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence this evening, Mr. President.
Moving on to our minutes, can I have a motion to approve our regu- our regular meeting minutes from January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five open session, and our regular meeting minutes, January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five close session?
Mr. President, I move that, um, we approve the, uh, minutes from our previous board meeting. Regular meeting held January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five open session, and also January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five close session.
Can I have a second?
Peterson move for approval of motion.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Claude?
Abstain.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Abstain.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to our board committee reports. Mr. Thomas, is there anything from our athletic committee?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Ms. Martin, anything from our CAC committee?
Yes.
Oh. I do have the report.
Okay.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. The CAC meeting notes from January and February twenty twenty-five. The CAC met on January sixteenth, February sixth. I apologize, I'm standing in for Becky Neves, who had a conflict come up for last minute, so I don't have the attendance list, but I will get that to all of you in our official minutes. Uh, the January meeting was used mostly for organizational purposes. Um, chairperson, vice chair, and secretary were selected. Becky Neves is the chairperson, Kristi Rensholy is the vice chair, and Jennifer Moss is the secretary. The CAC has determined for the time being to focus their attention on three areas and their corresponding policies. One is technology, two is community culture and environment, and three is teacher retention. Discussion was had regarding the processes of the committee and the collective communication. Um, we're still not sure if we have everybody's exact email addresses for the board, so we'll work with Ms. Martin to get that and make sure that if anyone was missing on the communication, that they will be, um, included moving forward. So, that's just a note of clarification. We are working from Google Docs and some other internal processes now to make the organization look low a little bit better and have better collaboration with the team. Um, one of the pieces that came up was some concerns about HSA's and their longevity and their retention. So, Kristi Rensholy and Becky Neves agreed to reach out to current and former HSA members to create a master guide and SOP that can be used by all the HSA's and passed down for each HSA that comes up behind them. So, hopefully, they can encourage parents to step up and participate. And the CAC discussed concerns that the HSA's have had increasing dwindling numbers, and if there are any ways that we can best support them to encourage community involvement. Technology concerns were discussed, um, internet connectivity and the loss of instructional time, particularly when using the iReady benchmark. Um, there are continued concerns with the functioning of Chromebooks. And the CAC noted that policy states that there's a technology plan that is dated in the policy, and we're wondering if the district has one and if it's been updated, and if we can see that as well, where that technology plan is. That's listed in Technology Policy two thousand and thirty-sixty, which contains very vague language of computer labs, distributed computing, um, et cetera. The internal communication around the district, um, the district shall provide communication between schools by variety of means, we talked about, which we know. Um, and from the handbook, the school of Winslow Township provides internet access for all students, faculty, and staff. The use of an internet account, as well as other communications technologies, are privileged, not a right and inappropriate useful result of disciplinary action. These were just notes of us going through the policies and looking to see what was already stated as we were having the discussion. A student's activities while using the communication technologies in the school system must be in support of education, as we all know, and consistent with the educational objectives of the district. There were some discussions around community, um, and the HSA concerns, which I talked about. One of the issues that came up, or the discussions, I should say not issues, that came up was the opportunity to use parental volunteers, even with a policy on the books. So, we were looking at policy ninety-one eighty specifically, policies ninety-one fifty, ninety-one ninety, and ninety-two hundred, which are all currently, um, being looked at by our committee with potential future recommendations. There are no recommendations in that area at this time. Teacher retention was discussed with the CAC, recognizing that this is not just a Winslow issue, that this is a statewide and a nationwide crisis, making it even more critical that we at Winslow have a plan that we're concerned, and that we're very proactive in reducing teacher burnout and increasing retention within the district. Um, we looked and we noted that there was no current, there was currently no board policy on the books regarding teacher retention, or our methods for how to, um, do that and, and have policy around that. The CAC discussed the latest controversy, um, of, that garnered some negative, um, media around staff not being allowed to participate in Spirit Week with Eagles attire, um, which only served to decrease staff morale and correlates to, you know, we know that staff morale correlates with student achievement. So, with all of those notes, the CAC has two recommendations that they'd like to bring to the board this evening, based off of those discussions. Um, you should all have this in writing as well, but I'll read it for the public. Um, the CAC recommendations that they're, that we are bringing forth is number one, an outside technology audit. The discussion of internet and technology issues has gone on for many years at this point, and with the internal technology department having tried to make many adjustments over the years, we propose that the district hired outside agency to look particularly at infrastructure for its internet, routers, systems, our current service providers, and any other pertinent technology areas, so that this no longer impacts student achievement. So, the recommendation is to have an outside company do an audit. The second recommendation by the CAC is to have the policy committee look at and revise the teacher dress code. The CAC feels that in a time where teacher retention is extremely critical, this is free, no money, and simple measure we can utilize to appreciate our staff, make them more comfortable, as they increasingly rise to the challenge of working longer hours, taking on extra assignments, and continuing to support after-school activities. We all know that teacher morale directly impacts student achievement. And I will make a further note that is not in there, but that we will add as we give updates. One of the things we would like to have looked at within the teacher dress code is those that have medical exceptions for things like wearing sneakers or other things, and have that be looked at again, so that all of those medical exception pieces get accepted, um, in as well, as that could be an important factor for somebody being able to, um, do their job on a regular basis. That was it.
Excuse me. Can you give me your name?
Yeah, Christine Rensholy.
Oh, how are you?
How are you?
Don't I feel silly.
Don't feel silly. There are no, there are no bad questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, no report at this time.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. McManus, marketing committee?
Uh, I do have a report. Um, uh, the committee met, uh, with myself and Ms. Wanda Claude met, and we, uh, met over, we met on the, um, twelfth of February, uh, on Saturday morning. The overview is the marketing committee convened, I'm sorry, February eighth, to discuss strategies aimed at promoting the educational and academic achievements for our employees, staff, students, staff. Uh, primary focus of the meeting was to explore innovative ways to enhance communication and engagement across the district, while celebrating the achievements of our school community. I know that this is, bears a little bit of repeating from our district goals. The discussion of the committee identified critical need to improve dissemination of information regarding upcoming events and achievements. Uh, key area of focus was leveraging technology to increase engagement, and the discussion, discussion centered on text blasts. Um, I had sent out to some members, just as an example, um, of, uh, of a text blast with a YouTube video attached to it, just to give an idea of basically what it is that I was, uh, trying to talk about, but utilizing these text messages, because we, again, we do have the ability to do text blasts here within the district, uh, as a tool to share on updates and, uh, upcoming events and highlight a recent accomplishment. This would ensure timely communication with all stakeholders, including parents, students, and staff. Uh, social media club, uh, this is a, uh, I think this would be a really good way to, or from coming out of committee, um, to be able to help add some content. Uh, but that would also then be able to go out. So, establishing a student-led social media club under adult supervision. Uh, the purpose of the club would be to create and manage content for various social media platforms such as YouTube, Instagram, and I know that there's some question in this society in general about TikTok. But the content aim would be to inform parents, inspire, uh, inspire folks, and engage the school community by showcasing both past achievements, as well as future opportunities. Uh, so, proposal, uh, to come up with a social media club. Uh, one of the things I did not write in my notes, and forgive me for doing so, this could be, um, specific to the district-wide or even school dis- uh, like, one for the media, uh, middle school, one for the, um, for the high school, but it's to create content in, in ABC, highlight, uh, upcoming community events such as Juneteenth celebrations, as well as sports activities, showcase individual student achievement through interviews that though, with the academic success stories, individual academic success stories, for example, National Honor Society, or, um, National Junior Honor Society folks. Uh, and these interviews would be to, to help, um, like, almost like a personal testimony where kids could share, uh, among their peers, what their, their life's best practices are. Uh, sometimes folks don't know, because they don't know what they don't know, because they don't know. Um, but to be, for the kids to be able to share that among their peers, and then see features, interviews with students who have also ideas for improving the social culture within the school, which would foster a sense of inclusivity, as well as collaboration with one another. Uh, platforms use, uh, utilize popular social media platforms again, like YouTube, Instagram, and TikTok, to produce these both long, long-form content, as well as short-form or reels. Uh, it's a form of communication that a lot of the kids are, are using now. Um, and frankly, just about everybody else in the societies, or a lot of folks in the society, is, ensures a wide range across different audience, uh, segments. Uh, goals, uh, increase, and this is a big thing, because I know this is one of the things that we've talked about before, is to increase the ease of engagement for all stakeholders by providing accessible, engaging comment that keeps everybody informed about the district activities and achievements, but also fosters student involvement in promoting school pride and community spirit, uh, with creative storytelling and digital media skills development. Um, the overarching goal of these initiatives is to enhance communications throughout the district, while celebrating the success of students, staff, and employees by increasing engagement through innovate, these innovative strategies like text blasts and student-led social media efforts, we aim to strengthen the connections for all stakeholders in our educational community. Conclusion, the committee is confident that these proposed strategies can and will create a more connected and engaged school district while highlighting, in many cases, incredible achievements within our community. So, look forward to further discussions regarding these ideas.
No, I didn't ask this before. Does anybody have any questions about the last two committee reports? Anything from negotiations?
I, I would not. I'd take a pass on that, other than we have commenced the process. Thank you.
Operations committee?
We did not have another committee meeting after the last. Our next meeting is scheduled for February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mrs. Pitts, policy in, uh-
Uh, the policy committee, uh, had its first, uh, meeting of the year. Uh, I will, at our next meeting on the twenty-sixth, have a full, uh, narrative on that, but we did, uh, go over, uh, three, five policies, all of which were mandated, and in some cases revised. Um, as I said, at our meeting on the twenty-sixth, I will have a full narrative on the policy, um, first policy meeting, so that, um, by then, board members will receive a copy of the, um, revised and mandated policies that we discussed, um, so that at the twenty, meeting of the twenty-sixth, we can call for a first reading. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, anything from the two township committees?
I can do a report on the Economic Development Committee. We, we had a, we had a meeting on February third. Uh, we had approximately about eleven people that attended. Uh, the deputy mayor, uh, was in, in attendance, and we basically discussed the new, uh, housing being built, over six hundred homes coming down to our township. Uh, they're gonna start to have a business of the month, uh, platform where they can pick a business, and the business will be featured as business of the month. Of course, I let them know that, you know, we are the, one of the biggest employers in Winslow Township, so we should be, be considered for that as well. Um, they're doing a whole new master plan, five-year master plan, that they will be rolling out this year, and they'll be contacting us to be a part of that, to get our feedback for that. Um, but the township is going forward, a lot of new initiatives. They talked about the Fourth of July, uh, fireworks, that's gonna be right here in our own middle school building, so we should partnership with that to do, maybe the marketing team wanna do some stuff with that. Um, and that's about it, but they, they definitely have a, a robust, uh, outcome for that, and they'll be moving forward, and they'll be reaching out to us, um, for collaboration on different things that they're working on.
Thank you. And as far as the planning board, when there's nothing to report from the planning board yet, because, and that meeting will be next Thursday at seven p.m.? Moving on to the superintendent's report on page three. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report, as reported by the superintendent, from page three all the way to the, uh, page seven?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the superintendent's report, that it appears beginning at the top of page one and continues to be, uh, I'm sorry, page three, beginning at the top of page three, continuing through to the top of page seven.
I have a second?
Peterson move for a second motion.
Roll call, please. Okay. Mr. President? Yes? Can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McManus? Thank you. Um, page five, number eighteen? Yes. It says the cost of a nurse, RN sixty-five dollars, LPN sixty-five dollars. Is that for a single engagement, or for a day, or?
It is per hour.
Per hour. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Page six, number twenty-one. Our soft technology, sports, um, varsity tutors for schools, um, just needed some clarification on what exactly and how that is all coming about. So, it's a tutoring service to provide supplemental services for our students, just a contracted service. Um, as being funded, uh, through a part of our title funding, uh, the program will take place in various formats. So, it can take place during the course of a school day, or some of the programs, uh, some of the schools may choose to implement it after school. So, there will be, it's online for four of the students, small groups, three to five students at a time, and, um, and it will take place, uh, at least three times a week, three, five times a week, but a minimum of three times a week. Um, some of the, uh, tutoring, tutoring may be done in class in a small section. Teachers may pull students out and monitor students while they are receiving. The tutor online will be a live tutor. Okay. So, there will be direct instruction being administered.
So, when they're in the classroom, they'll be able to talk directly to that live tutor?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how are those students selected?
Oh, well, those are the students that are identified as having, uh, particular needs or the individual support skills.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I have an ongoing question. And when will they be notified? Do they have a deadline? Because-
When will-
Like, the students that are, that are, um, selected to be used for this tutoring program?
Right.
When will the parents be notified?
So, the, um, I believe that- So the I believe that the permission slips have already been developed. And I don't have an exact date when they go now, but that should take place.
And this for all grades, correct?
So all students are, no, not all grades, right? It's primarily schools one through six. In addition to that, outside of this tutoring, we also still have after-school tutoring that takes place at the middle school, the high school. We have tutoring that takes place before school as well, in addition to the after-school tutoring at the lower grades. So we are trying to do as much, provide as much additional support to the students as we can. And there's also the opportunity for teachers to service tutors during the day, during their professional. Their prep period or their lunch every single spike and without if they choose to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report. Starting on the middle of page seven and going all the way through the middle of page thirteen.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the Business Administrator Report as it appears, beginning in the middle of page seven, continuing through to the top of page thirteen.
Can I have a second?
Peterson seconds the motion.
Mr. President.
Okay, maybe do you have any questions?
Okay, page eleven.
Okay.
Number twenty-one and number twenty-two, I just wanted to make sure that the amount was correct because in twenty, it's two hundred and thirty-three.
Right, so for twenty-one and twenty-two, they're riding our bus. So if we have a bus available. And we put them on and divide the charges up.
Okay.
Winslow Township Board of Ed, the host in Camden City, so they may be on another bus, might not, and we're not that, I don't care. Atlantic City, yeah, transportation. So it's the host district. And we may not be dividing that cost up between many students, so we're gonna charge them their fair share.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes. Excuse me.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel report from the middle of page thirteen to the. Middle of page fourteen, we now have a motion to approve the personnel report.
President, I move that we accept the personnel report as it appears.
To the recommendation of superintendent.
As it appears, beginning in the middle of page thirteen, continuing through to the middle of page fourteen.
All right, can I have a second, please?
Peterson second the motion.
Any questions? No, sir. Roll call please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the addendum. Doesn't look like we have one right now. Open Public Records Act.
Yes, Mr. President, between the time of January ninth and February sixth. We responded to a request from Christopher Canton and Tony. And it's American Transparency and Open the Books and he wanted an electronic copy of all payment transactions. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. That was approved and produced and the second one came from Charles Rudolph of Smart Procure. And he wanted a payroll journal, not, I'm sorry, not a payroll journal, a P O. Invoice check journal from seven fifteen twenty-four to January twenty-nine twenty-five and reproduced that and submitted it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Book. Dr. Fatih, do we have any information items?
I just want to piggyback off of the athletic report. I went down with Mr. Thomas. I didn't write it down because I thought he would share with the community. The boys and girls track indoor track team won the sections of this year. The boys' track team under Coach Custis has shown tremendous improvement over the past three years. This is their third section in a row and of course, the girls' track team, this may be their fifth or sixth in a row. But it is commendable for what Coach Brown and Mr. Custis is doing with those young people. Tremendous achievements and they continue to do it year after year after year. The only constant we have at this point are the coaches because the young people. Change over the seniors leave and replace the freshmen and they're doing a tremendous job with those young people. So we're really, really proud of the, not only the achievement, but the continuation of constant winning by those two programs. I do have one additional information item, but that is for executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Fatih. Moving on to old business, anybody have anything for old business? Moving on to new business, anybody have anything for new business?
Mr. President, there on February tenth, there was a county leadership meeting and N J S B A sponsored. The presenters were the part of the Department of Education Commissioners. Committee and the focus was on the immigration policy. There was information given out to members to take back to districts. What they wanted to emphasize to us was that. With regards to this whole immigration issue, that as districts, we should actually stick to whatever visitors policy we have. And abide by the visitors policy that we have and to perhaps not get caught up. And what the social media is putting out as it relates to the immigration issue. And to stay tuned to them and they will absolutely let us know and keep us abreast of to how things are going. So that those were very prominent things that they shared with us at that meeting. And I believe Ms. Ms. Martin also attended that meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pitts.
And just one other thing, with regards to an email that I received, I think we all received from Mr. Mario Partey. And with regards to a program that he is suggesting and offering that's called the On the Bell Program. And I would ask as a board if we could take a look at that and consider that. For discussion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Pitts.
Mr. President, if I can, if Ms. Pitts could indulge me for just one second regarding the immigration policy and the visitors policy. Is there, could you in maybe two or three sentences explain that?
I can, Mrs. Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Basically, what's been advised, there's there's orders that have been issued to the local police department regarding ICE and their activities. And I've been asked this at a number of different locations. Essentially, if ICE were to come to the school, the first question that would be asked is whether they have a criminal warrant or an administrative warrant. And what it says and the scope of that warrant. I would suggest that in the event that happens. That I'd be called and by the administrative staff and review those documents. Or somebody in my office review those documents in short order to confirm their validity, specifically whether they're executed by a judge. The the other piece of advice that has been issued by the Department of Education is. It's not the administration's job or any principal or anyone else if ICE were to appear and be taking action to interfere with those actions. Likewise, the local police department ought to be notified. Which they probably will because in each instance, as I've spoken to various chiefs in various towns where we represent the school boards. They have a sort of a standby policy that's issued by the Attorney General of the State of New Jersey. Telling them not to interfere with the ICE investigation or action that they're taking. But to provide sort of ancillary support services, which is basically standby. And essentially, that's the route that's been taken so far. It's my understanding that. Other than a rare occasion in in North Jersey, particularly in Newark, there hasn't been much activity of that nature in the state of New Jersey. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I have some new business as well.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, just keeping in line and focused with, you know, this being Black History Month. And no last, this time last year, we did a very vibrant Winslow history, Black History Month that we didn't get a chance to do today. This year, but my Winslow winning team has prepared a statement that I would just like to share with everybody here just. About the Black History Month and it goes like this. Acknowledging Black alumni from Winslow Township and Edgewood. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests and members of our community. It is with great pride and deep respect that we come together to acknowledge. And celebrate the achievements and contributions of all Black alumni from Winslow Township and Edgewood. We honor not only their accomplishments, but their unwavering commitment to excellence, resilience, and the betterment of their communities. As we celebrate, I would like to make a call to action. Let us not simply record these achievements in the book and forget them. Let's continue to acknowledge and market the accomplishment of all our alumni, not just as a one-time event. But at ongoing celebration of their impact. There's just stories deserve to be shared, celebrated regularly, for the achievements are a living history. As we gather today, I want to make one thing clear. I do not consider this simply Black history. I consider this our history. History that was achieved by Black individuals who through their determination and resilience have made a lasting impact in our world. I am not an advocate for human separation, but for human collaboration. For it is through unity that we create the strength to overcome challenges and achieve greatness. Throughout history, individuals for our township, regardless of their race, background, have faced challenges. Yet time and time again, they have risen above adversity. Their stories are not defined by the color of their skin, but the strength and their determination and the relentless pursuit of success. Today, we pause to recognize these incredible men and women who have left their mark on the world, a mark that transcends race and identity. From educators to entrepreneurs, to artists, to advocates and leaders in every field imaginable. Our alumni have shaped the future of our community and beyond. Their work, their impact, their legacy serve as a testament to their power of determination, hard work, and most importantly, collaboration. Whether they returned to give back to our community or went on to make a global difference, their influence is undeniable. In Winslow Township and Edgewood, we celebrate the diversity and richness that each person brings to our shared history. The legacy of our alumni, whether Black, White, Hispanic, Asian, or from any other background, is one of empowerment, achievement, and unity. Their compliments reminds us of the success is not determined by one's circumstances, but by the strength of their character. The pursuit of dreams and the support of the community that believes in one another. As we reflect on their journeys, let us remember that the path to success is rarely easy. But with perseverance, determination, and collaborative spirits that unites us all, anything is possible. The alumni we honor today, regardless of their background, have broken barriers, challenged norms, paved the way for future generations. The example teaches us through hard work, unity, and commitment to one another, we can overcome any obstacle and achieve greatness together. So to all our alumni from Winslow Township and Edgewood, we thank you. We thank you for your leadership, your vision, your contribution to our community and to the world. Your stories inspire us all and legacy will continue to inspire a generation to come. Let's continue to celebrate the achievements of our shared history while building a future where everyone, regardless of race, background, identity. Has the opportunity to reach the fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. President, I would just like to share something with the board. On February sixteenth at three P M, the Village of Camden County Incorporated is holding an educational town hall meeting. At Sergeant Ron Wright, E F W, Post three oh three on five oh six Sicklerville Road, Sickler Avenue in Sicklerville, New Jersey. This is the way that the community is trying to come together to collaborate with the school district, but they're trying to gather all the community members and the parents. To see what we can do to make sure that we can be a support to the school district to help us move forward and have great, great, great student achievement. So if you're available to come out on February sixteenth at three P M, please come out and share your ideas and your thoughts. And maybe participate in helping us achieve all the goals that we have set forth in the school at Winslow Township School District. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, are we into new business here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
A few folks have approached me about starting up or maybe resurrecting talk of the board members. Is there any plans on doing that?
No. No, I don't believe we are allowed to have that anymore.
Oh, really? Okay, all right.
Hey, anybody else for new business? Moving on to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public comments. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings. To ensure that all our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment. And to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district, we'd ask that speakers follow the guidelines for making public comments. The board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. And I'd ask that you kindly respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. When you get up, please announce your full name and your town of residence only. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, submit your questions in writing to the Board of Education. In the event we're unable to answer your question this evening, with your name, address, and telephone number where you can be contacted. Your question will be answered within a reasonable time. And lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. Thank you, sir.
Can I have a motion to move into public comments?
Motion, Mr. President, to move into public comments?
Peterson, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes, Deb Murphy. It's that time of year again. Marching Man is, we're starting to go to our competitions and I had the times for our first competition. Our first competition is February twenty-second and we will be at Millville High School. We're scheduled to perform at two thirty and then the guard is scheduled to perform at six thirty. It would be great to have a nice little training squad in the stands.
Mr. President, is this, Dr. Fatih, is this something that would be on our website?
I don't think so, because this is usually building specific, so it should be on the high school's website. If that information has been shared with the building principal.
They might be on the athletic page.
Yeah. Okay. But again, it is normally building specific, so whatever's going on at the high school activities, that's where we found.
Yeah, I just needed the time. You said Millville High School?
The band's performing at two thirty.
Two thirty. Two thirty.
And then the guard goes on at six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Jennifer Moss.
Good morning, good evening, um, hello? Good evening, board, and good evening, district members, I'm Jennifer Moss. I live in Sicklerville, and, um, I'm an alumni of the high school, and I'm also a parent of two high schoolers, freshman and senior, but I'm also a teacher. And I'm coming to you also, um, on behalf of my daughter who cannot attend tonight. I teach her private school to accompany her children with disabilities. My campus has three classrooms located in a public elementary school, so we are invited to be included in the high school activities, the middle school activities, and the elementary school activities, that's a part of inclusion. Um, my school, since it's a private school, has a dress code. We have to wear, um, school-issued polos, khaki or black pants, and, um, rubber-soled shoes, because we do have children who have behaviors. I am writing this in regards to the, uh, negative email that went out about the Eagles wear. We were allowed to participate in, um, Fire Prevention Week, we have a Turkey Bowl every year, Spirit Week, and this week is Random Acts of Kindness, um, because we are a private school, we have to wear the uniforms. However, we are allowed to participate in these activities, and it was such a breath of fresh air to be able to come in wearing the Turkey Bowl sweatshirt when the students participated in a football game with the teachers. It was nice on Fridays to be able to wear jeans during Autism Awareness Month, and wear our Autism Awareness T-shirts to support autism awareness. Um, and during the month of December and January, we wore our football Eagles gear on Fridays. Parents have made comments that it is heartening to see that their students can share in these activities with their teachers. That the students love the times that we match, they pointed out that we matched, we got to take pictures with them, um, and all the student programs were done, my prep work was completed, and at no time was my professionalism questioned or compromised because I was wearing an autism shirt or an Eagle shirt instead of my regular uniform. It's the little gestures like this, getting to participate in these activities, that makes my job that much more fun and rewarding, because I get to participate in these activities with the students. Thank you for your time.
Tawanda Bird.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Tawanda Bird, um, I live in Sicklerville. So I come before you to ask you, how can I help? I'm not gonna point out the obvious, which we all are aware, short-staffed. We all are aware of teachers resigning, which I've been a teacher for thirty years, and I've never seen this before, ever. I don't wanna point out the obvious, we all know that. I'm coming to you to find out, what can I do to help out? It's about three or four months left of school. I'm a teacher, I see that the teachers are burnt out. We need to try to figure out what we can do to pull together collectively, as a community, to see what we can do to help pull through for the rest of this new year. As mentioned, I just see it, I don't even have to disclose everything, I'm sure you know, but I see it. And if we, as a community, want the rest of this school year to go smoothly, then we need to figure out, we need to get behind, get from, behind those desks, we need to get up in those schools. And listen, I've been teaching for thirty years, I don't teach at Winslow, I have my own school, my own private school. I have half of your students, um, that attend my summer camp. I'm familiar with the kids, I have about three master's degrees, all of my clearances. I said it before, what can I do to help? Because I see that there's issues that's going on, and I'm gonna need to go on Winslow Talk to say it. That's not helping anything, coming here is gonna help. So again, my name is Tawanda Bird. A lot of the principals know who I am, and I'm here to help, I, I really am. Another issue that I have, um, is that my son is non-verbal, um, and he's diagnosed with autism. So I believe it's the L O D room that he's in, and what I've, um, noticed, and it's not just here, that they have other behavior kids that's in this classroom. My concern is that my son is non-verbal, so he can't tell me, he can't come home and tell me what's going on if someone does anything to him. His teacher just recently resigned, which, whatever, to each his own, um, but I kept my son home for two weeks because he had to get used to a new teacher, and I just have concerns. So honestly, my hus, and I went to my husband, because as a mother, we protect. And I'm like, okay, am I overreacting? And like, no, so we've been praying about it and trying to see what should we do moving forward, because I don't feel comfortable sending him, because he, he had to get used to a new teacher. So, again, I'm here to help, I have time to do so. And for those parents that can, maybe they can help in other ways. So if I can hook up with someone after the board meeting, to jot down my phone number, to see if I can come up to the schools, to help with some of those kids that may have behavioral problems, because I guarantee some of them attend my summer program, and I don't have an issue with them. Do I put my hands on them? Of course not. Do I redirect them? Of course I do, but it's all with love. And I'm not saying that they're not getting that with the teachers, I'm not saying any of that. But what I'm saying is, I have a good rapport with them. So if someone is telling you that they're willing to help, take advantage of it. And I'm not saying that, uh, change is gonna happen tomorrow, that's not, that, it don't work like that. Policies have to be put in place. But what I said, what I'm saying is, I do have the time to help out, and I'm willing to do that. So, again, my name is Tawanda Bird, and I would like to help.
Ms. Bird, are you available full-time or part-time?
You guys can afford me, so it'll be voluntary.
With all those certifications, I mean, I'm ready to. I just wanted to know, um, Mr. Davis, I direct the human resources, he can get your information at the end of the meeting, all right? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for your interest.
It doesn't make sense to complain about it if I'm not gonna be able to help.
I appreciate it, thank you.
That concludes those that have signed up. Do we have anybody in the waiting room?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Can I have a motion to adjourn public comments?
Mr. President, I move to adjourn public comment.
Peterson second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, um, Mr. President, we do have an executive session this evening, uh, as indicated by Dr. Potte. So in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, we will be adjourning into executive session on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at approximately eight P M. Of the nine exceptions under the law which permit us to enter into an executive session, we will be utilizing item eight, which is, uh, matters and impact involving employment appointment and termination of employment terms and conditions of employment, uh, et cetera. Uh, I anticipate that the executive session would last fifteen to thirty minutes, and there may or may not be action taken coming out of executive session. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Motion to move into executive session?
Peterson second the motion.
Roll call please. Oh, no, roll. Looking at it.
Um, Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.